Board of Trustees for Santa Barbara School Districts for Tuesday, May 17th. We will begin with the flag salute.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Alma y si necesitan los servicios de un intérprete estoy disponible. Gracias.
Gracias a usted. Okay, do we have public comments at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, I do want to acknowledge that we have headsets for the hearing impaired if anybody needs that as well. And now we will have public comment.
We have two public comments this evening, Angela Padilla and Kate Smith. Angela?
Okay, Madam President and School Board Members, Paul Rooney, our CSA Chapter President, could not be present at this meeting, and I know that our resolution for Classified School Employees Week was not put on the agenda in time for voting, but this is what I would have said, or Paul would have said. The California Legislature adopted the third full week of May of each year as Classified School Employees Week by passage of SB 1552 in 1986. The week of May 15th through the 23rd of this year will be celebrated and has been celebrated by the school districts and school workers across the state in recognition of the many contributions classified professionals make to the education community. Classified employees provide a wide range of essential work. We provide daily care and instructions for California students, guiding them from preschool through high school and including community college. So, in not having this resolution on the agenda, I'm just going to say, like I said, what, this is what would have been said. Thank you for joining the state legislature and hundreds of school board members in adopting a resolution declaring the week of May 15th through 21st, 2001, as Classified Employees Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gordill, we did recognize our classified employees today in our E-News, and we do very much value their work, and we will have a resolution, we recognize this week in E-News today, but we'll have a resolution that doesn't recognize this week after the fact, but recognizes the value of our classified employees as part of our team of professionals here at our next meeting.
Great, thank you, Dr. Sarvis, and I do want to reiterate our appreciation for classified staff, and hopefully, we can make that a very public statement with a resolution that Dr. Sarvis mentioned, so thank you for being here and for reminding us of that. Okay, we have another public speaker?
Kate Smith.
There is deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption, and the retaliation against whistleblowers is rampant and severe. Taxpayer-paid lawyers collude, conspire, and cover up wrongdoing. Arthur Schopenhauer, the 19th-century German philosopher, said truth goes through three stages: First, it is ridiculed; second, it is violently opposed; and third, it is accepted as truth self-evident. In our country and around the world, there is a revolution. Truth will out, justice prevails, and love conquers all in an eternal conflict against humorless arrogance, illusory prestige, brute force, and primeval stupidity. Everything that has happened to me in the last three years, starting from the time I was illegally disqualified, has happened before, but back then, I had millions of dollars, and I hired lawyers. Now, my work is done in pro per, and it is much more satisfying and challenging. I will be submitting witness subpoenas, deuces techum, for information that will prove this school district is corrupt. Please provide taxpayer-paid lawyers, oh, please provide the amount of money you have spent on lawyers in the last year. Please provide the amount of money you have paid lawyers or consultants to deal with Kate Smith and my daughter in the last year. Please provide the amount of money you have paid Craig Price to deal with Kate Smith, and include the money that was paid to his law firm or to anybody regarding the restraining orders. There was $10,000 paid to a private investigator to investigate addresses of families that might not be in the school district. I have eight issues. I gave you the email from Dr. Carol Renaud that shows you have dozens-
Thirty seconds.
-of issues that are being negotiated. You cannot, you cannot avoid exposure. My daughter is in the Santi Inez Valley High School District Transition Program.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We will move on to the action agenda. Our first item, B1, Decision on Administrative Law Judge Decision Regarding Certificated Reduction in Force and Approval of Resolution Number 2010/11-50.
The primary purpose of tonight's meeting is so that we can get board action on this. I'd like Ann Peake to comment on it, and I would like to make a comment regarding some of the allegations in it and the findings of the administrative law judge, because I think we need to make it very clear to the public what the truth is.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Peake?
Thank you. As you know, a reduction in force hearing was held on May 3rd here in this very room to determine if we, the Santa Barbara School Districts, had conducted our reductions in force appropriately. We, the judge's decision determined that we did, which is a nice vindication, I have to admit. So, I would just ask that the board approve Resolution 2010-11, number 50, which upholds all of our layoffs.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sarvis?
And as you know, Ann Peake put a lot of energy into getting this right, and this, in fact, is evidence that she did get it right, so I'd like to appreciate her good work as well. One of the things that came up in the hearings was an issue that the board has heard a number of times before, and that's that the district simply cannot lay off nurses, that we have to have nurses, and that the only way we can get some of these things done is through nurses, and that's a legal requirement. And the administrative law judge considered that very carefully, and the administrative law judge was very specific about the answer, and the answer is, and I'd like to quote the administrative law judge, that the statutes do not require that mandated services, and we do have to provide health services to students, but they do not require that the mandated services be provided exclusively by certificated nurses. The administrative law judge goes on to say that the respondents have not cited any provision of the law that mandates employment of nurses. On the contrary, as the district notes, the districts may employ properly-certificated persons to provide for the health and physical development of pupils. And in fact, the law judge goes on about that, but, you know, that's something that we keep hearing, and we hear, we've had speakers speaking to that effect, we've even seen articles and letters to the editor. It is not a requirement that we have nurses in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Okay, so, and just to reiterate, while it is not a requirement that we have nurses in place, we, and even if we do not have nurses, we provide health care for our students.
Yes.
We would meet all the requirements of the Education Code.
Exactly, and so, not having certificated nurses does not mean we do not have health personnel available on campus.
Correct.
Okay, board members, do we have any questions or comments?
Well, could I just say that it's not that we don't want nurses, we're being forced to put these positions potentially on the chopping block just because of the budget cuts, so it's, we understand that technically, we don't need nurses per se to perform some of these duties, but it's not that we don't necessarily want nurses, it's a cost-cutting measure that we're forced to do, thanks.
Yes, and I think that's a great point, because given the resources to do so, we would certainly choose to have certificated nurses.
I think for one step further, we haven't voted to eliminate nurses.
We have not.
So, that's, that decision has not been made, this is the worst-case scenario, but we have not focused on exactly who and what will be cut, for the most part.
Well, we're required by the Education Code to put out notices by March 15th based on that worst-case scenario.
Right.
Then there's a date in May where we have to send out a formal letter that says, unfortunately, your services will not be required for this next school year, and that's the date we're coming up on, at which point then hopefully, we'll have good news about multiple things, and we'll be able to start bringing staff back, which is the piece that I look forward to, after all we've been through.
We all hope to achieve as many rescissions as possible.
Definitely.
Mrs. Parker?
My question is for Mr. Smith, and that is if the unification goes through and the state budget at least does hold the districts at a flat place. I know that in the secondary district, rescinding layoffs is largely driven by master scheduling. How soon would we be able to rescind notices for teachers?
I'm going to read you a headline from the Orange County Register. Schools urged not to rescind pink slips. California's leading school financial consultant is urging school districts statewide not to rescind pink slips to teachers and other workers for at least a month, and this was dated as of yesterday, but to abandon planning for an anticipated worst-case 2.1 billion funding cut in 2011-12. Ron Bennett, president of Sacramento-based School Services of California, said that Governor Jerry Brown's state spending plan unveiled Monday should reassure school districts that they can expect to receive about the same funding levels in 11-12 as they did this year. Even so, he stressed that districts should look more long-term at having to possibly make draconian cuts in 12-13, should a series of tax extensions championed by the governor fail to pass later this year. So, I would say in about a month.
Okay.
And in follow-up to that, I'm preparing an E-News that explains to our people, because we've got a lot of people out there with pink slips, with layoff notices, we're about to send them our letters saying, here's, here was the decision of the administrative law judge, the board ratified that decision, or approved that decision, and it keeps them on notice that they may not have a job. Now, not knowing what will happen with the state budget, now, we are looking at the May revise right now, but we will have to make some decisions, and not knowing where we are in negotiations right now, not knowing what's happening with the state budget, trying to project based on the May revise, and coming to a final budget for the district for next year, 2011, 2012, will not occur until the end of June, and I really believe it's most on us to tell our people, we will not know until the end of June how many of these layoffs we're able to rescind.
And I would add to that, I think that when we start bringing people back, it'll be in tiers, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, or phases, because I think it would be fiscally imprudent for us to bring everybody back at once because of some of the other constraints that we have on us vis-à-vis the unification and the structural deficit that still exists at the state level that hasn't been completely eliminated.
I still think that even if it's only being able to rescind some of the notices in June, towards the end of June, is better than we have been, than we've done in past years, so I'm hopeful about that. And I know that nobody likes to do these, because we don't want to lay off anybody, but I will go ahead and move to approve Resolution Number 2010/11-50.
Thank you, is there a second? We have to do it, folks.
Second.
Thank you.
And I would, I'd also like to reinforce the furlough piece, which has been mentioned in passing, but if we are able to negotiate furloughs, again, that means that we'd be able to bring a number of people back, so, something-
Yes.
-to really keep on the forefront of everyone's minds.
Great.
Sorry, and before we have a vote, I just have a question for Mr. Smith. So, I know that in the last week, or maybe it's Ms. Peake, but in the last week, we've had some meetings here about the process of layoffs, et cetera, for different staff members. How else are we communicating that? Because I'm getting two different messages of folks who are not completely clear that this is, you know, in case we have to go worst-case scenario, who feel like they, who basically don't understand the process, so I'm trying to figure out how we're communicating this to staff.
I think probably you.
Okay. The meetings that have occurred the past few weeks have to do with our classified staff, and layoffs for the classified staff are handled very differently than they are for certificated staff in the ed code. The certificated staff meetings already occurred back in early March, prior to the March 15th deadline. We've communicated with our principals, they have been working on their master schedules to determine, based on this set number of FTEs, what sections do we need. Once we know all of that in hold, there's still some bugs out there that are getting worked out at some of the sites, because they're wanting more FTEs than we actually have in the mix to give them. Then we'll know by subject area what we can truly bring back, at which point then we can start rescinding them. I would say that our certificated staff are probably a little more familiar with this in that they go through it every year, which is a very unfortunate statement to have to make, that the past five years that I've been doing this, I think we've done layoffs every year, and it's, you know, the union is communicating with them, information has gone through their attorneys. I don't know if that answers your question, but-
And I think the other issue is, is the issue with classified is unique because of the unification. We normally would not be doing this. I mean, basically, until we see how everything shakes out, we, you know, for lack of a better term, had to kind of over-notice to protect the district because of the protections that classified employees get two years from the date that the unification becomes effective.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are optimistic that we will be able to have some good news and rescind as many of these as possible.
That makes two of us.
Yeah, I'm sure. You probably get more of the concerned comments even more directly than we do, so-
Yes, quite a few.
And, and I know you sympathize with all of our employees, so thank you very much for your efforts as well.
You're welcome.
Okay, that moves us on then to our conference agenda. Item C1, Discussion of Civic Center Act Facility, I'm sorry, the Civic Center Act Facilities Use and Fees.
And Eric Smith will make this presentation. Let me preface that, though, with a notice that at 6 o'clock in this room, La Cuesta is going to have their senior words, and they're going to be anxious to get into this room, so we really should try to vacate it by, you know, 10 minutes too, which gives us, oh, half an hour here. If we can't do that, and maybe we only need, you know, 15 minutes of discussion on this anyway, but if we can't do that, we should, at that point, hold it over to the following meeting.
I'm optimistic we can do this in-
Good.
-a brief amount of time.
Good.
So, thank you. Mr. Smith?
All right, thank you. I'm just going to make some general comments, and then Dave Hettjung's here, because he deals with the specifics of this operationally. I think it's useful to revisit our Civic Center Act policy and administrative reg periodically to see if it still is in keeping with what other entities are doing with respect to fee schedules and things of that nature. Obviously, you see in front of you Board Policy 1330 that provides general policy statements about Civic Center Act, which is a ed code terminology for use of school facilities. And so, you'll see a couple of things that are notable in the policies, that obviously we provide facilities free of fee for our own students, and then for entities above and beyond that, it's pretty much on a first-come, first-served basis. You also see a general policy statement that the board believes that the use of facilities or ground should not result in cost to the district, and that's an admirable goal, but I've never been in a district where I saw full cost recovery. It's just, your fee schedule has to be high enough, or would have to be high enough to offset that, that would alienate a lot of users, but it is a goal, and we should strive for it. On the administrative reg, the administrative reg really calls out what the various categories of users, including, you know, obviously, free, direct-cost use, and fair-market-value use, and who falls into those categories and why, which is really dictated by ed code and regulation. It also identifies the restrictions that are placed on users when they do use our school facilities, and stipulates who's liable when there's damage to any of our facilities. So, I'd really like to just kind of open this up for questions about, not only our policy administrative reg, but maybe if there's questions about how we manage this operationally, I'll let Dave chime in on that, and I know that sometimes it doesn't run as smoothly as we'd like it to, and maybe we can address some of those questions as well.
Okay, so, given our time constraints, and I do want to be respectful of La Cuesta's need to get into the room as soon as they can, if we have questions that we would like to ask Mr. Hettjung or Mr. Smith, we can ask them now. Mrs. Deacon?
I would like to address a couple of things, and this is based somewhat on some anecdotal information I've been getting from the sites. We had moved to a system where individuals, users were asked to pay in advance upfront, and at least from what I'm hearing, that hasn't always been enforced, and there are a couple of reasons why it might be problematic. For instance, if custodial time is billed in advance, but the custodians, for whatever reason, are not there, if a facility is, has the ability to be shared and used and at the time of the permit, maybe a single user applies, but then halfway through the permit period, another user comes in to share that facility, then the first user is being billed with a whole amount. A couple of times, facilities have been closed during the permit time by the district so that they weren't available by the user. So, I'm beginning to think that maybe we need something more like an escrow account or, you know, a certain amount of money that people pay in, because what we would charge them, not knowing all the information at the beginning, might be different from what we might charge them at the end. And I, I know there are some users out there that have not paid yet, and a while back in March, we got this memorandum from Brian Tangway that identified all this money that's not been collected, and I don't know where that is now, but $61,000 had been invoiced from Santa Barbara High, and $3,000 had been paid. So, clearly, we haven't got this dialed in completely yet, and so, I'm, I appreciate that it's kind of a work in progress, and maybe we'll always be changing to a certain extent, but I, I think the policy as it is right now isn't working as well as we would like it to, at least as well as I would like it to.
Thank you. Mr. Herron?
Is there an answer to the question about Santa Barbara High School? Because I noticed the same thing.
I'll let Dave deal with that, and then with regard to the escrow issue, if we move on to that, I noticed something in the administrative reg that would have to be changed if we were going to do that.
I'm not sure what was in Mr. Tangway's memo. I'm in the process where I, I try and bring the board policies and ARs to the board, and then I'm not in the process again until the very end when it comes to signing the permit and signing the fees. The rest is kind of in the purchasing department, which I don't supervise, so it's kind of a shared thing. As far as I know, the only people that we bill after the fact for is Santa Barbara City College for their use, per our joint use agreement with them, that, and a lot of those fees are for adult education classes that they hold at Santa Barbara High School. So, I would hope that that memo from Mr. Tangway concerning Santa Barbara High, that a majority of those are all Santa Barbara City College, because that's where the lag time is. All of our other users, we require payment in advance before a permit is approved. Schools know when a permit is filled out, because they usually get a copy or the site visits them, and a lot of times, they'll go ahead and permit use without the permit being approved, rather than telling the user, no, you can't use it till your permit is approved. And some of those things we find out about after the fact. If the person doesn't pay the permit, then facilities, or the facilities in purchasing assumes they didn't use the site, but then maybe the site administration let them use the site, and so there's a little bit of disconnect there, and that may be where some of the people are saying that we've heard, well, I haven't received a bill for my use. Well, in theory, you shouldn't receive a bill for your use, you should pay it before it's approved, then before you use it. I've never had a complaint about a user signing up for a facility, using it, and then ending up having to share it and the cost not being adjusted. That's never been a complaint that I've heard or something that's come to my attention to address. Typically, the only time we allow shared use is for our pools at Santa Barbara High School and Dos Pueblos, the larger pools, where you can put two people in there at the same time, and I've never had a person sign up for the whole pool and then be forced to share it and not have some sort of paperwork come through that changes that, where they weren't paid for the whole fee. If it's happened, it hasn't come to my attention. Typically, we commit our staff for our custodial ahead of time. The schools are pretty good about knowing pretty much what it's going to take to take care of that event. Custodians, if it's on a weekend, I believe they have either a two- or three-hour minimum for their call-out for overtime, so, you know, and those are billed, and other than Santa Barbara City College, questioning the amount of custodial that Santa Barbara High has assigned and negotiating that as far as how much of this cleanup is really attributed to high school students, and how much is attributed to City College students, and what's the extra amount and fair share, I don't recall having a complaint about custodial hours, except in a few cases where users have gone in, negotiated a number of hours with an athletic director, and then the principal, when they get the permit, fills out something different. And the principal is the one that signs that permit and is responsible for assigning the fees, so it's more of a site communication issue.
Right, and I, and the case that I've heard about was at the DP pool where a custodian was not there when, when the users arrived in the morning, and so, they couldn't use the facility, and I know these are site-specific issues, but-
That, that, that doesn't come to our, to my attention, anyway.
Right, right.
Because if that happened, we sure, we would sure do some kind of adjustment.
Sure.
If they were inconvenienced, if they couldn't use the facility, then we've always been very lenient with our adjustments. Where we haven't been lenient with our adjustments is, I signed up and I decided not to show up.
Right. Oh, no, of course, that makes complete sense, but I, previously, when we were invoicing after the fact, some groups were billed for the whole facility when, in fact, they ended up having to share, and so they had to protest the invoice, and I don't think we really want people to have to come back to us and say, you've overbilled us, I'm trying to think-
I don't recall that ever coming to my attention.
Well, it may not have come to your attention, but I think it's been happening, so, I just, the system is not perfect.
As far as, if somebody has a permit, then, then it's up to them to volunteer to share. They have a permit to use the facility, they're first in line. If they want to give up half of that pool or facility and share, they can-
Oh, they're happy to.
But they shouldn't be required to, yeah.
No, it's not an issue of not wanting to share, it's an issue of being billed.
We'll be glad to come down and adjust and refund fees. The, the main problem was that when we were charging after the fact, we became a bill collection agency, and the staff time that it takes to do that was, was just not available. And then we had some people that just refused to pay, we had to send some people to collections. It's never fun to send people to collections, time after time after time, of trying to get them to pay, and, and it basically almost became a full-time job for one person to collect fees. fees. And that is just, you know, staff time that we don't have.
My question still
Yes.
is what at Santa Barbara High School's specific. So, Dr. Saris, could you just look into that? And if there's anything we should know about, let us know. But there was a huge difference.
But you're saying that could be the city, the joint use agreement with City College?
I, I know, I know of, of, other than a few, I, I don't know of anybody that owes a significant amount of money, other than Santa Barbara City College. And that's, and that's kind of a 30-to-40-day type thing, because they, we send them an invoice, and they do pay, they do pay within 30 days of the invoice.
I just, if you could look into it, that's all.
So, as long as we just get...
San Marcos as well, because they're $14,000 in arrears in collection.
Yes. And I do have that noted, and it is being investigated. And I expect an answer on that.
Two other quick questions. What's the status of the agreement with the Luke Theater? At Santa Barbara Junior High School?
They need to come back. We were just talking about that the other day. So...
Because that's, that's expired, hasn't it?
It's expired. That's correct. So, they need to come back.
And three, I'm just curious. On the AR 1330, page 5 of 5, it appears that we've changed the policy twice, using a board brief to do it. Is that normal? Is that unusual?
On an AR?
On an AR?
On this AR, we've made so many changes that, yes, we, we have made those changes and put them in a board brief. Yes.
And so, that's, that qualifies as being passed and approved by the board?
Well, no, no, that doesn't qualify as being passed and approved by the board. ARs are administrative regulations. And at the time that we were going through and having every board policy and every administrative regulation looked at by the board, it was in all that cleanup process. So, we expect that we should be able to operate on the direction of the board, provided in the board policy, and that we should be able to make good decisions in the AR. If something comes up that the board would like to have a discussion, in fact, you'll see some ARs that do come to you directly, then we do bring it to you.
Thank you. I just hadn't seen that before, and I...
If I may chime in, on, on the subject of fees, what we've done is taken minor adjustments to things, where we found them to be out of line, and done those by way of a board brief. We wouldn't contemplate a, a overall price increase or decrease, or something like that, without coming to the board through the regular process.
And actually, we did do that, I believe, in 2000, 2008. As, I think in the fiscal recovery plan, we, we had an adjustment that was across the board that was board-approved. Just a couple of comments. On page 4 of 5, if you look at the last bullet, and this might address Board Member Deacon's concern, I think you would have to soften the language in that last bullet, with regard to, right now, it says, "The district does not issue refunds or unused rental hour, for unused rental hours or services." And I, I think if you look, take a...
I'm sorry, where are you? Because I, I see now multiple 5s here. Oh.
Yeah, page 7. Which, you know, if I'm in Dave's chair, you know, a literal interpretation is, is we don't do that, you know? I mean, so...
And that, that was geared at, at not showing up for an event or a rental. We've already informed the custodian that he was going to be on-site. He's already there for, for, for three hours. And, and, and we've been very lenient with users, as long as they contact, contact us in advance, where we know they're not showing up, we don't have to have the custodian there. We have issued a refund.
And maybe we should change that to say something like that.
If, if I could just interject, it sounds like perhaps what we need to do is look at the process by which people can request a refund, or make known a complaint about their, their experience. So, that, that does come to your attention, because if people have complaints, but it's not going anywhere, then we're not going to be able to address it. So...
My attention or Mr. Tangway's, either one would be appropriate.
And that's another issue that I've given some thought to, is that, you know, originally, Brian worked for Dave. And so, when we started looking at that closely, there's always an internal control problem with regard to your purchasing department being overseen by your facilities, because of the obvious conflicts with competitive bidding and things of that nature. So, you want a firewall. I, I think the bifurcated structure of how we deal with Civic Center creates problems. And so, one of the things we might want to look at, given that Dave has more on his plate with, you know, the new bond measures and everything, is maybe move Civic Center Act completely to one person, so we have more accountability.
That does seem like it would make sense.
Michelle works for Brian, right?
Brian, that's correct.
She's the one who's issuing the permit. So, I, that might be a, a good suggestion, because I, I still am not completely convinced that not having a deposit or a, you know, a large portion of the total amount due paid in advance might be better. I, I don't know how often you get asked to reevaluate the, the initial cost, you know, when people come back and say, you know, whether school closure, you know, conflict with other users caused my, me to overpay. But you may get as much bookkeeping, accounting work by doing it that way as you would, as opposed to collecting, say, 70% upfront, and then the, the balance later. Just a thought.
So, we'll probably bring you something back that looks at that structurally, because I, I mean, I've been uncomfortable with that for a while, but we've had other things kind of on, on the front burner.
Okay. I'm going to allot us five more minutes, if we need it, on this item, and at which time, if we are not through with our discussion, we will hold it over to a next agenda, because I do feel that La Cuesta needs to have access to the room. So, are there any additional comments or questions that board members want to make at this point? Okay, I had one very, very minor thing, and that was, it was somewhat of a question. It might be a correction, but I don't know, because I wasn't sure if this was an error, or if I was just misunderstanding it. It's on the very first line of the BP. And it says, "The Board of Education recognizes, recognizes that district facilities are a community." And I was assuming it meant like a community asset, a community resource.
I think it must be asset.
Okay.
Our resource, yeah.
It's right here.
That's interesting.
Okay. So, that's, that, beyond the other things that were, some of the things that were raised here, was just a concern, a little minor change that I had. I do want to address the, the comment that you made, Mr. Smith, about that last bullet, "The district does not issue refunds on unused rental hours or services." I would be hesitant to change that language too much, because my feelings would be, if, if they're unused, then it means they're not being shared. They're not being, so there's no reason why a person should be getting a refund on, or a group would be getting a refund on that. And if it was that our error prevented them from using it, that seems like a different issue.
I, I guess my, my thought is, since we ask people to pay in advance upfront, and if they don't use the facility, are we going to keep their money?
Well, I would, oh, I, well, I guess that's the question. It depends. I, I guess we maybe have to discuss the, a timeline. If, if they just don't show up, then yes, I think they forfeit their, their payment.
There could be something like a 48-hour...
But if, if they cancel at a certain...
Within advance, advanced notification.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let us work on some
Okay.
language there.
Okay. And I think we have...
And I think in the policy, we're just missing the word asset.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
We'll fix that, too.
Having read it enough times, I think that's the word that's missing.
Okay. Ms. Lamont?
Tiny little thing on page 5, or 2 of 5. Number 2, I think that's supposed to be a period instead of a backslash.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And on 5 of 5, I just noted a decimal point instead of a comma on one of the rates, so we can take care of that, too.
Okay, great.
For a fair market.
Okay. And if we notice any additional little editing issues, we'll, we'll send them to you. Okay. Are we through with our discussion here, then? I think we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and give the room to La Cuesta. Thank you.